District three.
Guarantee of ground, 24.
How completed by?
Devon and Rudy, Councilor.
Will be third speaker.
She'll be the speaker, City Secretary.
So, Diethe Fench, City Manager.
Victor Barrera, Economic Development Director.
Malisha Day, Economic Development Assistant Director.
You're the president.
Charles Gray, Vice President. Steven Mark, Ralph, Government of the Community, Economic Development. Craig Zellinger.
So, in addition to the Executive Session, I have two assistant executives, and one comment card. Rebecca Crawford.
Rebecca Crawford, I'm thankful to be here. Seven, can I get Crawford? I'm sorry.
Megan Edgert.
Oh, address, 526 East Manulia. And I'm very newly coming to the city meeting, so I'm sorry. Anyways, we have seven kids in, and I love living in Duncanville. I love this neighborhood. So, I had just a couple days ago, my friend told me about this meeting. And I just wished to ask if you could consider whatever happens in this shopping center that no alcohol being sold being next to the school, and we live in the neighborhood, so especially right next to the school, just for consideration.
Definitely with me and you, I would consider consideration. I'd be able to reserve that until the executive session. The number of community economic development worth discussing, stats, and supplies, including current progress on the project, next steps, co-lab space, financials update. And, uh, we're good.
Okay, my name is Victor Barrera, Economic Development Director. First off, I want to thank Monty Anderson, the owner of Winkin' Plaza, for allowing us to use this beautiful place as what this This is my first time in the state, it is amazing. So, thank you. Well, what we wanted to do is take an opportunity that the two of you, the city council, and the public was here to share the project that had been made since the partnership with Monty, the partnership between the city, corporation, and in the redevelopment of the center, and where some of the money has gone, and what else has been working. So, I've asked Monty to put together a quick presentation to tell the story of the redevelopment of the center. And provide some little bit of tape, I mean, that's okay. I'm sorry, did I pick another spot?
Got it, good. Thank you all for coming today. We love all that work. So, this may be the first, this type of space, and we're going to talk about it in a minute, like I do the slides here. First, I was wanting to introduce Lyle, I've been studying Dallas County, I'm a liar, so I'm not a person who will say this. One of the things I'm going to do is help entrepreneurs kind of get a foothold. We've got a lot of big, better type of space. I've also served at media levels in Kansas and Congress in Southern Dallas. And today, and also City Councilman for two years, one term. So, today, I'm president of Bob's Real Estate, and owner of this shopping center with my partner. And I'm going to give a little update on what's going on here. So, first, I just want to introduce some of my staff, the crew that's done all this work. You see these guys out here today, I just want to recognize them. They've picked this crew, and they really, they're the guys that do the kind of quality work that you see in this space today. Douglas, this space, these lines are really straight, our corners are good, all our doors work really good, so we really have a great team. And then I want to recognize some people here, Legal Lyles, my longtime partner, from over here in business. And my daughter, my partner in my business, Hammer Steen, sir, my granddaughter, who's in my business, Abby Mash, over here. And Christopher Duncan is up on top of us. And there's others that are here, but I tell you, the ladies here in my office, the women in our offices, without them, I can tell you right now, the tech work, the high tech that got here, the details, stuff would not be this way today. So, some of the projects over the years, you know, I've been involved a long time here, the hotels, theaters, the spacious theater, of course, main station, some of the work on Main Street, and different things like Tower Station, and many awarding projects, including some that we've got here in Duncanville. So, in addition to what I do at Bob's Real Estate, I'm involved in another company called Neighborhood, which is an organization made up of four people from Buffalo, New York, Minneapolis, South New England, Indiana. And we travel around the country, creating, helping cities and small development create ecosystems
And then today, most of you know, we couldn't ask for better operators for most of you guys. I'm so glad to have you here in Duncanville. And that's what the sign looks like. And then Cope, which is an art studio, a pet supply and art studio. It's really interesting story at this sign, it's not up yet. The gentleman that owns that operations mother was Kim from Kim and James. So they moved off to below him. You know, he was raised in the neighborhood right here. And they moved off to below him, Kim and James did, and sold Kim and James to somebody else. They really didn't take care of it. But then he moved off to East House. And so he came back to Duncanville. So he's back here in Duncanville now with his business in this place. If you haven't been here, you gotta go. It's something to see. This, the finish out here is the second renovation we've had in the city of Duncanville. It's just a great place. It's just a really creative front place. His name is Colin Johnson, and he's just a great guy. So heading to see Dr. Snow here. We put in the pet supply, it's here. And then in his store, then we have a painting company. And then Honey Buns was already here, it should be there in store. And then we have this room, okay, that's here. And then we also have another number, we have a painting company that provided the corner. And they have an old feed-up space, and we've completely revitalized this place. So she's gone out, I'm back in here, so we don't have her here today. And Big Mike's, you know, Big Mike's was, you know, they got a lot of space with Big Mike's. Big Mike's is one of those legendary businesses here. We don't have showtime in all of the places. You girls probably there, and they're, you'll know how special they are. And so we made, we got them a lot of time leased, so we made sure that they would be settled in here for at least another five years, and they're really happy. They're operating their salon all the time. That's what it looks like in there. Metro T-Mobile had a big lawn space, with a bunch of empty warehouse in the back. It was tired also, we rebuilt it. And then we took the warehouse space that was there, we cut two store fronts, and so we created two little additional 400 square foot area plus spaces. One of them has to be checked in there, and there's the other ten. And then, so today, the shopping center, right now in green, it's 78% leased. That includes, most of us finish out hand lease. There is swatches here at the back, they're moving in down in the old part of all the indoor space. And we have a pay term over next to the spot where the pulse shortage will be. Those tenants are not here drunk, but the rest of the, the rest of them are here. There's the monument sign, we're rebuilding the monument sign out front. There's a food conveyor at a temporary location. Then you can see the new roofs on the left side of the building, you can see all the new. On the right side, we have three good roofs, so they've been able to be repaired and patched, and new covers that they put in. So you can see a whole cover there. And so today, spaces that are still required renovation for the ones in green. So one is the hotel part behind the wall here. Another is one space across, one small space across there, and then the old meager space. The old meager space, you know, I've been really picky on the kind of restaurant or the kind of tenants that we get in that space over there. I've got a lot of people that I've just worked hard to give them level and quality if they're wanting. So I've had opportunities, at least just like 100 times, to different kinds of businesses. I've helped them out, and I'm really looking for something special to go in there as part of that. Now, we've got a lot of space there, so we've probably not, it's probably not real issue to fill up all that space with restaurants. It's 18,000 square feet, and, you know, I've had a trouble designing one good restaurant by now. Part of our job here is to get people to look at us, or to cultivate our own restaurateurs who might give us the level of quality that we're looking for. So when we purchase this property, I just wanted to, sometimes I hear people saying, "Money gangsters doesn't have any standing bank where it doesn't have any, you know, money in this project." So I wanted to make you aware of something here. You see that there's a 7.3 million dollar, 7.3 million dollar loan that we got on this building here? And I want you to know that right there is my personal guarantee. So what that means is if this venture fails, okay, they don't just take the property from me, they come take my personal assets. Okay, it's a personal guarantee. Okay, this is not something I take lightly when I'm doing. And today, if you, if you look down at the bottom, there's three million. This is a report that EDC gets. We're about to see that there's 3 million, 300,000 dollars in cash that my partner and I could put in for this project out of our pockets, including the 7.2 million dollars fresh in here today. Now, here's a recap of all the money that's in the property. So there's the initial loan of 7.3 million. There's the initial contribution of a million from us. There's the economic cost of the contribution of 1.5 million. Then there's the additional 2.385 million for a total of 12,276,000 in the property today. And that's before we finish out, we need to finish the parking lot and, uh, before we finish the parking lot and the meager stuff. Now, this is interesting. This is CoStar building. If you heard, if you heard of CoStar or live in that, CoStar is kind of a, what they do is they monitor all the commercial properties, and all the commercial properties are for sale or leased. When we bought this property, this was a two-star property. We bought it, that's how they headed this, this is corrected from their, from their books. And today, they moved this up to a four-star. So they come out and look and detail and look at what we've done on here. So we now have a four-star shopping center. And this is the tax I do in 2021. This property that's on the tax office is 3.1 million dollars. And then as we began to improve it, it went to 3.4, 3.9, and 4.2 million is where it's at today. So it's creeping up all the time. The D-CAD doesn't, you guys are gonna tell on me. But D-CAD doesn't keep up, you know, with something we do, they don't keep up for two or three years. So eventually, they will pitch up to the real market value. So again, it's a 78% lease. This is a list of the items in our agreement that I'm supposed to do. These are the, for the 1.5 million dollars, these are all the things I have to do to the building. Those are the, those are the ones required in our agreement. That's asbestos, parking lot repair, restyling, exterior building, put in this parking lot lighting, exterior painting, landscape improvement, HVAC, exterior plumbing repair, repairs of the sign, repair and paint the awnings and the socket inflation out front, finish out the new tenant, roof repair replacement, the monumental signage, and refinance the loan with Texas Grand Bank in order to release an additional 500,000 dollar guarantee that the D-DC has on this property. So these are all the things that I have to do by March of next year, I think it's March of next year. So these are the things that we've done. These are all the things you know. So these, these you can, these you have the financials, the approval is here, the work we've done. You have all that, so it's completely open. So we're waiting right now on the parking lot repair and the lighting. And the landscape improvement out front is with you right now. We're waiting on you to give us building permit, so we can finish that work. So it's not waiting, it's not waiting on us. We're, we're kind of, it's been a little bit complicated because we have easements, and, you know, we have areas that are cities and part of ours, so it's not somebody's fault. Mine or yours, it's just the nature of a complex situation. And then the refinancing of the property, which we plan to do. Hopefully, we'll see interest rates come down this year, and we plan to do it at that time. Now, we started out this property, we got a loan at 4.5% interest. Okay, you remember, the interest was 4.5%. And then interest went up because we're in our interim period. And they could have went up to 8.5% on us. So my bank said, "You're a good customer, we'll only go up to 7.5%." What they did is they came up with some shopping center, about $15,000 one. Just so you know the kind of pain that I feel. So today, we're getting ready, this joint is very, just about ready to go to building permit. I'm hoping that's something I don't have to have a permit to do this, but I'm not. If you're looking down the, between the buildings over here, between every season and the locker mat, if you're looking down there, if you're remembering some of the original rederies, there was, there's some design over there, which has got to change. And this is, this is actually the real design. So, so they've metal coming off the buildings, and you can see the weep and plaza. And by pulling the metal together, it probably slowed the traffic now coming through this. There's people flying through this slow roadway. But that's, that, those are real drawings, those are conceptual drawings. These become, there's the site plan, this is, this is ready to go, first building. Then, if you look at the next slide, here, the darker area in the middle of the parking lot. That is the, the area that is approved for condos to be built up there. There's 51 units approved to be there in that, in that site up there. At the top, you can see the landscaping is up, this, this rain garden. So that's a pretty good wide landscaping block. And it's also more than just a landscaping block. This parking lot and this property right now, there's no way you can build it right in the, in the condition that we have as far as dumping water into the, into the streets and sewer system and, and our, sewer system. And so these will actually catch some of that water. They will catch some of that water and provide beautiful locations at the same time. And out in the middle of that parking lot, oh, there, we got approval that the 51 condo units that would be sold. And I heard from some of the neighbors around here, people didn't really want those. And I've talked to several people here, and so I changed my plan on that a little bit. I downsized it from 51 to 19, you know, condo townhomes. I'm gonna show you a picture of them, and we're ready to, we're ready to get started. I'll land that to you pretty quick. Also, I want you to look at this, or this area right here. So there's the, the pay area, this is a couple playgrounds, yard area back here. So like, out of this area back here, solid concrete. Right now, again, it's just water running off into the alley, the easement side here. So we'll be putting that there also. This is the site plan of those townhomes, condos. The, the weep and moles over on that side. You know where the chase bank, the chase bank, this is right behind the chase bank area. That area, when you leave now, you drop there, and you can see that's the area. I did not strike, just got a big block out there. So those will have town spaces in the street, they'll be facing this building, they'll be facing every season, and they'll be facing the center drive over there, their back. I can try. This is what they'll look like. This is very similar, if you remember, the, these are not finished architecturally, but there, you'll get the big scale, the torches, the green area, there'll be, there's a little bit of covered parking inside. What we originally did is we didn't have the interior covered apartment. We didn't have any of that, but we decided to put a interior covered apartment. These will be, these are high-quality units here that cost around $300 square foot. And right now, we don't have any, any of that, because it's only $300 square. But I, but I, I watched the, no, I mean, maybe, we can just tell us something, but I don't think they're seeing $300 square. It's getting up there, but, so that's what they look like. So these are high quali, high-quality, very contemporary, with the torches, it's got that, like, street feeling. So in closing here tonight, this is something that I said to you back in March of 2022. This is on the slide presentation that's in the city records here. Note to my friends and neighbors, we can trust. This project is gonna take time, it will not happen overnight. We will start by fixing up the current buildings and getting them occupied. Phase two, we will do some site improvements. Phase three, we will build some small kiosks on the street. Probably not gonna do that, it just doesn't work. Phase four, we will build new, new buildings in the parking lot. And then last, all of this is subject to change based on the market, the economy, cities only, and the real estate partners, including all of you that are here today. So thank you all for listening tonight, thank you for coming, and I'm glad to have you here today. Hold on. I don't know if it wants to, any questions? Sure. If you're going to try to add a line with the staff, anybody with a question? We have on the mirrors, it's probably here.
My name is Teresa Madam. Can I take that?
This person had an embrace, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, I'll read it to you. Quick, so I have had questions coming in from you. And one of them was regarding the security, meaning that your facility will have a 24-hour operation for those who are leasing the office. Can you speak to the security of your building and equipment?
24-hour doesn't mean it's running 24 hours. They have 24-hour access, just like you do at any other space you rent. If you go rent a suite over here, you have 24-hour access. Here, you have that, you have that too. We do have security cameras on the, on the entry, on the entry doors here. And you, you have to have a code to get into the building. You can't pass out a code. You have to have a code here, and your phone actually opens these doors. And so it's very high-tech, and we'll be able to, who comes in and out, we'll, we'll know who's here at all times. Again, I don't expect people to be here 24 hours. You have, you know, you have to come in the middle of the night to pick up someone. I mean, not here 24 hours, but nobody else.
The parking lot landscaping. So would you give why you're doing the landscaping? And would it still be accessible for, have the festivals as far as the parades, things like that? Can you speak to the landscaping?
Oh, I mean, that's our agreement. Our agreement was to do landscaping. I mean, don't you want the landscaping?
I'm not asking on my behalf, I'm asking so that way you can clarify if citizens would have some questions.
So this is private property. People that come here for July 4th, come here at our, at our pleasure. This is not public property. I know people think they own it, and I'm glad we keep doing it. I was here at the fireworks myself, here, you know, and I'm gonna keep letting that happen, you know, allowing that to happen, but this is private property. It's, I don't expect to change anything. And in fact, next year, I thought, this year, I thought next year, we should probably do something more. Not, we should probably do more ourselves, you know, because there were so many people here. The last meeting is gonna, is gonna help a lot, and you can patiently wait up here. It's just really, it does, it's not very inviting looking from here.
Did it help to mitigate the flood and stormwater runoff?
And we do have a problem here with stormwater runoff.
And when you start doing renovations, you have to break the property up, the code wants to be broken.
That's correct, that's our agreement. Let me out.
That's our.
Mr. Goldie?
Hi, again, my name is Teresa Madam, and I also have been dating here in Duncanville for 23 years, right on this street. Some of the, Mr. Anderson has showed to rock weed and trash. That's only been one of those back there, and it belonged to every season. And I live behind it. People would not lose things in the third, it's not trash, I'll bring back there for every season, make sure that it's big enough. As far as the receipts that they showed here, I can never see, none of my energy. And I have also police, this will be served here before we have taken over. The only improvement I see with this number so far, is this is bad because they're taking it right now, and you're not even trying to do it. He is gonna take away this entire parking lot for our community to get together for our parade for July, and he found a way, it's private property. He can do what he wants, that's what he believes. We want something here that the community can benefit from. What he is telling us, that is not for us. This is for one to have, and this is not for the community, and people that live right here, and that. And I don't think that this property thus far has benefited any of us. We have a day third coming this morning. He fell to mention that there's a gun shop also behind here. Close, it's a tattoo shop. Yeah, that's ours. But we don't deserve to have a lot of these things put in our community because we're a local, um, part of the people. That's what they do in every city, in every place. If they put these things in, they can think here and force it on us. We don't have a tolerance, and this is not new for the community of Duncanville. Thank you.
Mr. Duncanville, you have a question?
The question is, are you gonna take up the entire parking lot so that we can't utilize it? Lock it off for your private and personal use?
Who are your questions?
So the complaint is to get the company staff, animal, or staff president, or whatever.
So we're gonna have, this is our, we're, I'm taking the staff perspective from the property.
So thank you. So Mr. Anderson, you've been a fabulous job in kind of telling the story of where the shopping center had, where it was, where it is now, what it's supposed to do, when it's small to large. And Mr. Anderson, it provided extensive, good accuracy of all the items that were reached between all parties of the agency to address the shopping center. And as you may recall, the item is an extremely extensive list, and the majority of that's been checked out, bought, and handled. There are some remaining items that need to be done, for example, product, landscaping, irrigation system, some parking lot lighting, there is, so the area that we need to work through, which we have already worked through, we have some agreement, the agreement that we had in signing, and we take it to the reporter's office for the purposes. The permit has been submitted for the landscaping and the light fixtures, and we need to provide Mr. Anderson with comments, so we can continue with the process. I asked, Kurt, our building official, if any of the resources are right?
It's all correct, yeah. It's amazing that our list, when we did a, when we did a purview, it was exactly the same as Marty's, and you'll see that it was the same exact items that we inherited from.
So there are a couple minor, I, to address the landscaping and the irrigation plan, but do you feel that we're gonna come to an agreement here soon, or will we be able to issue that permit? With that short order, and if we get Mr. Anderson going on landscaping and irrigation?
Excuse me, what did you ask? I'm sorry? I thought you asked me something?
No.
Oh, sorry.
So we're gonna be working to get the landscaping, comments, and review.
Okay.
Soon, we'll get to a process.
Any questions? Back to the table. Okay, next, about the city, city council, government, community, economic development, corporation, government, discuss and follow. To that, we'll be settled. I'm going to go with the board, who will be starting, and we'll be all, see, the general account, DCDC, as the latest, DCDC commission.
Maybe let me progress this just a, just a little bit, and I'll let Victor take over. So we've made, obviously, we've got a lot of new faces this year. We're working here between the city council, city area of South, or the change agency, and our team. But we've made a couple of changes this year. One of those changes has been really, the collaboration with the DCDC, put property back in the tax office and the council, and so we've had a lot of conversations about that. We're working through some different ideas, you know, like request proposals. And we've been having active conversations with the DCDC about that. This is really the first opportunity I've seen this year where both groups are in the same room at the same time, to be able to even have some of this conversation. But I'd tell you, what, what I've experienced is, I am really excited to definitely figure out because the city council has really been open to new processes and new ideas and creativity. The DCDC is also, I feel like, they're open to receive some suggestions and thinking some new approaches, like investing in the field house and some of our operational stuff. Thank you very much for that 1.2 million dollars. Right, yeah, okay. Because really, the DCDC, the government, community, and economic development corporation really understands, we've had some conversations this year, that their role is really to invest in the overall community, to invest in our quality of life, to improve it for not only our businesses, but for our residents. And whether that's operations, whether that's facilities, whether that's any other purpose, whether it's working through different need processes, changes within special events, financing, or hotspots, you name it. I appreciate that you guys have all been open to receiving some new experiences and library. And really, at this point of the, the meeting, I think we'd love to give an opportunity really for you guys to have some conversations, that we could, kind of, if there's questions, which things that you'd like to talk about, but like, all of this, how you feel working, and, and just kind of give you a chance to speak with each other.
Well, speaking of, I'm happy myself personally. The word really, we have, we have a city council, we all work, one, correct. This council's always given us the opportunity to have our, have our opinions regarding the projects we're doing. And also being able to view the public opinion in terms of our developing. Our job is to create value, and create community, community, economic development, community development, as well as working with businesses regarding to expansion businesses. And I believe that one of the things we were working, city and council, jobs are open to care as a rule. We have, we're creating businesses, creating businesses to them. And I, I think that will come on this evening.
So I, I think that's, that's something we've always looked at. We're always looking for, for new opportunities in regards to that. And so, because each one of these decisions over here is a point of advice about the council. And so we want to make sure that we stay in the same vision, those migrations that the council will have. And I'm not sure if I'm over the standard, but I, I am curious in regards to what direction the council wants, or what you want to see, and how can we make that work. And so if that, if we represent a business, a community, create a value, should we represent citizens in regards to that? So if that, we work well in regards to making sure that we do that. So that would be our question to you in regards to, are we in the direction and vision of the council?
I was a prospect there, in my service. And what I, what I would do is, is that, the decisions that we might not be seeing in the DC, I think, well thought out, well discussed, and even there, I'm also looking to make it a little bit successful. And so, complicated issues, and now that it's, they have a discussion. You know, I don't think we have a lot of DCDCs that are, that are, but I'd like to go over the case of the work, your own fire, and not game, and, and, I don't know. So what I hear, putting back out, after the loss, here, there's a lot of things, and I love that, we're gonna have some new, well, these long positions built, and we'll make it every time.
A little laugh, is that?
The attorney has spoken. You might think, uh, maybe you'll, after that, that it really, you're gonna keep me out of it. And you can't do that, you're, you're welcome. Yes, that's a good point.
I just wanted to, to go to, to you all, I think, actually, certainly, I had an opportunity to, to, I was famous. And when I tell you...
And when I say to you, I had no idea how hard it was to get businesses. And that was amazing. So that was one thing that was an hour for me as far as outside of the building that they can, you know, be in the city. But I know you all, but I thought I was doing, like, my work here, and so I was saying thank you. Unless it's you before.
I think a lot of times, a lot of times, it's a little bit like, and sometimes they, sometimes they really good for us all. I would give a quote on those, you know, working with businesses now in the city to be acting distance and address this thing that needs to be done in that business coming into town. Whether they have concerns in regards to building, I would be able to listen. Can I always agree? Everybody can't be right, everybody can't be next. It's a process in this industry.
The question goes to the day, it's a convention of either people who own shopping centers or people who own businesses in shopping centers. We went, the first time I went, actually went with redevelopment with the week before. We were looking, we were talking to different people all over the country. So we're looking at franchises or starting businesses who either, like I said, want to actually have that partnership with cities and develop and move things into shopping centers. So we actually own shopping centers. Three of the developments we own shopping centers are in Denver. There were those who went to the building. A lot of times we meet with them and we go talk to them and we'll, we'll partner with them and we'll count other businesses that have lived in the own shopping centers. So if they have us, they also have to live in the same. And then we also work with other cities. There are other cities in our region that we actually talk to and do business. A lot of times, we'll have, we'll have a business that's that they can't do. So they have to partner with us and we're talking to people just to agree. We want to make sure, even if, even if they can't come to the city, they can't come to Dougville. You know, one of our guests up in the city is part of that and make sure that people know in regards to that. They'll always have to go to a person, they'll always have to go to a person. So the plan of this area down here, this is a place that a lot of people come down and they have a high-end experience. They're like, this is great place. And I would talk about that. But being that convention, you have this conversation and you talk to different people. Because there's, there's nothing that doesn't doubt us. And it's how we're being doubted as well. Doubts are great places. But you know, places that are around there that are close to doubting, you can do exactly what you want. Maybe we can work this way. We're right there on I-20, we have access on I-20, or five, and so going back and going back and forth to showing exactly what we're doing. We show people that we're not in a bad place. We show people that we're businesses, we have a share, we have a management, and we talk to people. What are you looking for? How can we make that work? For that, you're going to say.
A number of people have asked me, and are unaware of the types of grants they can pay for some of the areas. And some of the other different ones that we have there. Well, we see people who go out to projects. What we do to reach out to the small businesses that maybe are aware that they have access and we can request those help and that's maybe bringing signage, have been a place that they've been to most of their business. What we would, just go down.
Let me partner in two different answers to your question. Number one, for those of you who may or may not know, as Mary was saying, we do have grants. We are a business. And let's say you know business has been here fifty years, five, four years. One of the things that we look, that we look at is a lot of times people will drive to Dougville. We want them to be impressed with what they see. We want them to come to Dougville and love this, this is a great place to do business, a great place to live, work, and learn. But a lot of times, what they see is not where Dougville really is. So the Dougville Economic Development Community, Economic Development Corporation, we have grants. We're working to be in regards to paying the grants, the capital bill. We'll work with you in regards to a sign grant, if you can build a nicer sign, if you can see. Going up and down, seven, you have different companies that apply for a sign grant. And we'll work with you in regards to, but what we ask for is three different bids. The way the, the way the signs come and look, tell them exactly what you're coming looking at, tell them exactly what you're trying to do. The way we advertise those is we actually work with them in regards to advertising to the city. We try to work with the tanker in regards to that. And we have, we let that information out. We don't kick out ads and put advertisements and things like that. But we actually, we let that information out. People can work with that.
Mr. Anderson, are we not doing doors like you did? Are we knocking on doors and probably business, dollars, opportunities?
Yes, we had that knocking on doors. We started out a little bit strong, maybe two or three business partners a week. And we had some changes in our, with our staffing, so that's another factor. But there are many businesses that are ready and doors are, just started. So there's still many more doors than, many more businesses today.
This lady, she can't make a hippie ground running regardless of that. She goes to lunch with her friends. She goes to this box and the next is tough. She hit the ground running regardless of that. She likes to fight.
So that's, we won't be a small town. We won't, there are many more doors than, like, more places to visit. And we're going to try to make, try to make a change here if possible. Like, just a little step back for sure, too much.
So the area of business we can't show is, we are, which is a big problem. But that is a big piece of new briefing, economic problems, for, for, as us, for, they. And if we continue to work on that, it will be not only the daily picture type stuff, but also making sure we keep our businesses here.
And one thing to be worth noting, Mary, it's also not just talking about giving out grants. Yeah, when they go out and talk, if they finally have a problem with, with, they may have a problem with, so in this form, a stop sign or something that's, that's not being a regular thing. Once before, somebody went out there and they talked about power outlets. So whatever we can do in regards to vet business and helping that business sustain a business, break, break our front business protection expansion program. They may want to expand their business. Even local businesses want to. There's another business right there next to them, no one's in it. They're going to work in regards to expanding that and expanding the business. So we work with them in regards to not just giving out grants.
You know, there's also, there's, we've changed some businesses that have been some that, still do not. You know, we were saying that there's no one at the city that has come to visit us since we opened. This is why, in July, we appreciate the visits, you know, we appreciate that you're here, that you're looking to help us. That's what we're doing with this. Okay, what we offer is an opportunity, sort of as a resource. Maybe we, right here, are not able to help, but maybe we know if there's a stat that's in common, might be right for us. And we make that connection. But that's a, that's a good question.
I was just going to add, I think it's job as, as people are doing our business, presenting business to listeners. That's our biggest job. And for that information, like, I think it's a thing to process and to have. So that's our structure here. There's a lot of, a lot of business as well. So we go out and take, explain, some of the things that are available, take advantage of the services. And then we just, that's our primary job, please.
Just a, last question, ladies and gentlemen. You almost have a few, after months, of actually including the interior, exterior, renovation. But getting to be all that's here, now we also have the public's aware, we also have the public's awareness of some interior, there is.
There is structure in regards to that. We also look at if you're expanding, if you want to hire people to come to the city. If you want to, you know, a lot of times when you hire someone, they do relocate into the city or someone who's going to work in the city, there's ancillary opportunities coming. But they're going to be here for lunch. They're going to, they're not going to be like, not just with the state, the state, or anything. They're going to really go out and have lunch and.
This is a question on the website as far as providing information. That a business reached out, reached out to you, will turn around, right now, that you're reaching back out to the business?
Well, this is really about, we can say a delay in school, usually it's two hours. If it's a process, once they get the package, again, you know, really, it's out for a month or a year. But.
Well, the thing is, that, as the state also has a shift in here, she obviously needs a little bit before Director Ferrer. Our applications were not established. And so our applications, now we have established, we have applications, well, we can, we can.
So the agreement includes making contact with businesses, talking to them, and my parents. And in my area and other relationships that we have to, for, I said, town hall? Yes, we also have a grant bank. So even, even if a grant or something happens, we have a process that they get a, you know, in three, six months. Products, you know, and things, you need patience, and they feel like they're part of the city and that's just, no, we can't help them. Chair has already, just made sure that there's communication with the grant, they know the grant and the process. I have to say, I think even with our new staff, we communicate pretty effectively with those applications.
We'll talk about, we'll talk about grants. You know, they are for all, news update, are they in fact all blind, or are they all? Buckle there, Chris.
So our website is the, so actually, as a, yes, but are we trying to be a base with that we have information and direction for people who have really good questions? So I can tell you that, when it is, it will be translated over the following.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I interject just one comment? This, to me, seems like a city council meeting or a briefing session. And if I have a place, and it's not for the, the neighborhood, I'm already here. All of this is just about out of your shot for me. And if, if you're going to entertain comments from the neighborhood or if there's supposed to be another part of this session that's for participatory of the whole group, then.
But I, now, let me explain. During short meetings, I appreciate everybody that's home here. Everybody is open to meetings, everybody's invited to all their own meetings. And we have a significant number of short meetings. But they are hosted meetings and they are, are very discussion. Now, doesn't exclude questions that we might be able to answer later on. But during this session, this exclusively conversation between the council and the board, there's not to include, excluding here. I will remind members, because I've got the strongest voice myself, so I will remind the members to speak up over the talking so that you have a better opportunity to engage.
I, I would second that question. So on the branch, there's sort of a few patients, there's a current specific, the landscape plan. Talk to me, Ben.
Yes, yes.
And, and would like to share, like, hey. And are the grants exclusive to, for property business, it's got a non-profit, a platform, or, you say? Non-profit?
There's recently, where does the board stand on considering the land acquisition? That would be good as well.
I think we would stand on, we have, we've done it, we continue.
Well, we just, you just, right?
Yes, we just, we just, uh, the, fair on the, the, yes.
So do we see that, as a DCDC, see that as something that will continue to, to dive into
What exactly do you want us to say after Baker, the program they need? This is Bob.
Well, it's quickly possible to have a discussion, but in general, a topic we are agreed with some of us from the board that this is more than busy from that perspective. That, that, that. How long will it take us to get there? A long time. Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, if we need to see if we can give it a different perspective, we consider that help of those.
Mayor, you can still apply again and say people with experience, not everybody that is why, why do you want a lawyer to be on a meeting, but you know, someone who's got planning experience, someone that's got engineering exposure, he doesn't have to be an engineer, doesn't have to be a planner, but someone that's got experience, experience is what I was teaching in some, I learned more every day I was a little, I know, experienced great teacher, so it's the experience, not the title. And I have heard you to look at that. If you like, you know what they do, you know what they do, they go out and look for each national development, they look for community enhancement, so, you know, community is very broad, I mean, this portal was originally created to help move towards what we now call a field house. That is, you know, a big mission, was that the field house. And because the law expanded, when those bylaws were adopted, for adopting field houses, primary goal, and as the statute has expanded, a lot of them, you know, we cannot develop them, maybe the qualifications and the kind of people you need on there for every foot abroad or south, which needed maybe someone that's after the background, legal high, and all of those things for the field house. Now that we're doing other things, you know, Mr. Williams is obviously a quality of life guy, always has been, thank God, he's here, so he reflects that part of the floor, something for us if you want to see our business, why, to help you start with action. All those things end up there and they end up in the seat of the city. And so they ought to, I, I think you do yourself better by having the first group of people with the first experience make the decision. You have staff, staff, bringing the technical, which cannot ever be studied and experienced, goes by far more important, your seat and then.
So, Mayor, I did want to make one other comment, and it kind of goes back to the program. The reason is, and it's why it's, government doesn't move fast, okay? Your corporation, so you're the one that can move fast, and that's all I'm going to say, I appreciate that, that's going back to one of the problems, trying to get experience here, because, because government just tends to do the job, so we do a private company, do that R and D role that may just happen.
And I just want to look at the university, not only the experience and business, Mayor, because of personality, that means being on the side of the table, which is, we didn't, we didn't practice, you know, we didn't personally work hard to move fast, how we do this, and we're, and they did, we worked together and we did it, so, there's a lot of tactics.
So, you can move fast, many of them, we saw the.
The child wasn't really learning, the, the, the down there, was it something you, every time I get down there.
Okay, I believe a certain resolution, through the professional services, to provide a cover date, the city council, and planning, and authorize the city manager to sign and execute all documents associated with the unit agreement.
And Mayor, actually, we could turn it over to Matt Warren and M R B, they're going to do a presentation, and then kind of walk us through, they're going to free, I think like to sleep, I don't know.
She's going to.
Well, I'll put Matt, I just want to say that I'm so thankful that this resolution ended up on this agenda. All the conversations that happened right now, Doug and I kept looking at each other and nodding and smiling, because it all walks right back to that comprehensive plan, and I, I think the, the discussions that you've had tonight are a perfect example of why it's time, right? Why it's time to update that comprehensive plan, and why it's a, why.
We're missing the remote.
That's what happens at my house, too, when I. So, you know, I'll just start by saying, Mr. Williams said something that, that really, he said something that I say a lot, but he said a different word than like this word, but everyone can't be right, and everyone can't be first. And the way we say that in comprehensive planning language is, a comprehensive plan is about priorities, right? Dunkinville is a larger community compared to more rural areas, but I've, I've been watching and paying attention to budget politics in Dallas, in Austin, Dunkinville, and in communities a tenth of your size, and nobody has enough resources to do everything they want to do, right? And so, a comprehensive plan, an economic development strategy, which we also don't want to lose sight of, that's really in parallel to this plan, is about getting the big things right, and not everything's a big thing, right? That's, it's, it's a spin on what Mr. Williams said, but it's exactly how we approach comprehensive planning. And lots of questions out there tonight, and I like, there was a little ping pong match going on here. You all set the vision, and we help execute. We can't execute until you tell us what the vision is, and the council appropriately is referring to, we can't set the vision until we hear from these folks, right? Until we hear from the community. And so, this comprehensive planning process checks all of those boxes. We're going to dig into. That's the one. All right. All right, you can go ahead and flip it first. So, you all know us, we've had the pleasure of being engaged here in Dunkinville for, for a bit now, on the economic development side, we're starting to work more and more with the community on infrastructure and other items, and quite frankly, we're just getting to know the Dunkinville community through a, through a process of immersion and really trying to learn. I've personally eaten three meals in this plaza in the last 20 hours, all of them in the same booth, actually, at the diner, crack up, I, I end up in the exact same spot, order the exact same thing for breakfast and lunch, and they were open right now, and doing their dinner last night. When we went through the comprehensive planning, or, I'm sorry, economic development strategy, what we did is, is what Lisha was talking about, we literally, every time we went into the store, we made a reason to go get some coffee at Kinsman, or to go grab breakfast or lunch down here, or to go into some of, some of the retail shops around and ask a question, why are we here, and how's it going, right? And you all know, by virtue of, of the work we, we provide already, what we found. So, ineffective, what I just wanted you to know from this is, the first team and a few more of us who worked on that economic development assessment are going to be on this project, it's a diverse group, a comprehensive plan is just that, it's comprehensive, right? So, we need folks who understand infrastructure, we need folks who understand the built environment, we need folks who understand community development, the real estate market, local government operations, and, and that's out there. So, we have a couple of live, what I just called deal creators with respect to comprehensive planning. We'll get into how we use these, but the first is, it has to be grounded in real life data. There's nothing I love more than sitting across from folks, listening to the history of Dunkinville, listening to what they see and observe going on in the marketplace every day, but at the end of the day, we also need that real life market data to tell us what's happening in the community from a demographic perspective, we get bigger, we get smaller, we get older, we get younger, we get more diverse, less diverse, all those things, what's happening in our real estate market, values are going up, are they going up because things cost more, are they going up because we're adding more investment, what's happening in the market? That actual data tells us, you are here, right? Just like the map, you are here. It has to be shaped by public engagement, for all the reasons you all talked about then, the community in economic, community in economic development, and we're holding this to the minute, but we believe in robust, authentic, and meaningful pub, uh, public engagement, robust means we talk to a lot of people, in a lot of different ways, in a lot of different places. Authentic means we're asking the question because we care about the answer, not because you said in our contract, we have to ask the question. We ask the question because we care about the answer, and meaningful means, when a resident opens up, the comprehensive plan, they're going to see themselves in there, right? We, they gave feedback and we need it. Anger to a unified community, vision, you all said that word at least a dozen times tonight, and I'm so thankful and grateful to be working in a community that recognizes that that vision is, is what we're working towards all the way. And then the last thing, I think this is something that really sets us apart, this relentless focus on implementation. People hear the word plan, plan, study, and they roll their eyes, right? Because they remember every other plan we've done, they remember all those big binders sitting up on the shelf that just are the best dust magnets in town, they collect dust, they collect sarcats and eye rolls, and we looked at this in the seventies and we haven't known anything about it. A relentless focus on implementation, we have to get things done as part of this, as we're building this plan, right? I love comprehensive plans, so you all probably know, a lot of you know, I'm a former city manager, spent 20 years in local government, and I was a city manager, an economic developer, and an operations guy, I know what happens, we were joking about it, when David came in, you come in with a plan for the day, and the phone rings, and your plan is out the window, right? When you're a city manager or a council member, you got an idea about what you want to get done, and you just get taken by the wind. We manage sometimes, meeting to meeting to meeting, agenda item to agenda item to agenda item, and we never take a second to just pull back, and say, where is this community going? What is going, what, what's happening at the 50,000 foot level? Comprehensive plans happen, if you're a great community, they happen every 10 years in a big way, and they're updated every five years, a lot of communities we work in, their comprehensive are 20, 30, 40 years old, nobody takes the time to pull back. So, maybe once or twice in your career, if you're a city manager or a mayor, or a captain or, you're going to get the opportunity to say, whoa, where is this place going? And so, that map that this represents, pull back from the day to day, bigger, the vision that you're talking about, it communicates to the market what your community's all about, right? It collects all of the input from the residents and then says to the marketplace, this is what we're looking for. The, the point about, we've got a privately held piece of property that, that the city or the EDC doesn't control, city EDC doesn't control, anything can go there, anything can happen. If you communicate to the market, most developers won't waste their time coming to your community if their vision is the opposite of yours. If you don't communicate it, you're the home of the get what you get, right? Right? So. Go ahead. So, the first thing we do, sit down, sour that data. We use tools like CoStar, I was glad to hear Mr. Anderson say that, that he's familiar with CoStar, we use tools like CoStar, we use tools like MC, G I S, Esri, a lot, a whole bunch of other ones, we also use real basic data, like the Census Bureau, the American Community Survey, and others, we try to work with your assessment folks, with the C A D, and other, and other government agencies, your building department has talked to us about permit activities, we look at every piece of data we can get. Then we sit down and sit across from key community stakeholders, ask them, like business owners, for example, major reporters, district leadership, ask them, hey, what's going on in this community from your perspective, what are you seeing? This, this creates that picture of where we are today, you are here, that's the purpose of this thing. Go ahead. Public engagement, so what I will tell you is, I've got 20 tools that I use to get information from the community. If I wanted to see your bill, and brought them Dunkinville's community engagement strategies, it'd be a huge waste of time, right? We have to tailor this strategy to what's happening in Dunkinville, how do people get their information in Dunkinville, how do people communicate with the city in Dunkinville? So, what we're going to do is, we're going to have you all help us staff up a steering committee, a project steering committee, a group of residents, policy managers like yourselves, and staff, and that steering committee is going to start by telling us how we communicate with Dunkinville residents, how we communicate with Dunkinville businesses. We're going to create a tailored public engagement strategy. I like, when I said robust, lots of different people communicated to in lots of different ways, we have some digital tools that we're going to use, or that we, that we think might be applicable, I don't know based on what we know, but we have, we're going to create a project website at a minimum, so that you got a 24/7, 365, look at what's going on in the plan. We have some social media tools that we use, some, some franchise social, social media tools that are specific to a comprehensive planning effort, we have a cell phone app, if that's what works in Dunkinville, we can engage in the cell phone app, and then we use traditional media, like communicating through press releases, through neighborhood organizations and the like. One thing we know about Dunkinville is, is a very diverse community, and there's a very high concentration of Spanish speakers, and because of that, we're going to make a, a special effort to both, not just translate material, which is important, we want people to be able to read what's out there, but to connect to the Spanish speaking community. So, we're going to ask that steering committee, who are the, who are the Spanish speaking, we call them spark plugs in the community, the people who are connected to other people in the community? A lot of the times, this pastor's in a church, or civic leadership in, in, in organizations around the community, but those folks are going to become our ambassadors to the Spanish speaking community. And if the, if the steering committee, I don't have other populations like that, that need to have specific attention, to get them to come out and speak to us, then we're going to, we're going to tailor the strategy to that as well. So, what we did right, right, I would make a real high expectation, yes, sir.
Who's going to be responsible for implementing this strategy, is it M R B or the city staff?
It's a combination, right? We were talking about the public engagement strategy, so, there's, there are going to be three powers, there's the staff that stuff that M R B is going to do, thanks, no question, updating the website, getting social media stuff flowing, there's going to be stuff that the staff will help us do, making sure that the city website, the city's social media are reflective, making sure that the city's communication tools are being used effectively, and there's stuff that the steering committee is going to do. One of the things that's built into our, our proposal that we, we always encourage the, the committee to do as part of the public engagement strategy are public forums, and I call these things, roll up your sleeves and plan, I have already talked more than I would ever talk at a comprehensive plan public forum, these are working sessions where the public comes in, there's mats on the table, there's boards for them to draw on, that's where the steering committee shines, in two ways, one, getting their neighbors to come out to the event, circulating the information to their neighbors, and two, manning those stations, because your neighbors are much more likely to talk to you than they are to you, right? When they see you, they see a familiar, comfortable face, and they're going to, and they're going to speak to you, coach off. So, I would say, if you're questioned, all three, the steering committee plays a key role, staff plays a role, and, and we'll do all the facilitation and all the coordination and some of the content.
One more question, this is for a senior, are you eligible, maybe, or is it, or is it a little bit like a city staff, do they all have the resources to? I've, I've worked with M R B and not, but now.
You have a key part of this, we talk about meeting residents where they are, right? We try not to do all our events at city hall, we try not to do all our, all of our events, and we won't do many events, if any, in the middle of the day when people are at work, we want people to be able to come out and, and be part of this process. Vision, right? This vision is what we spend the, the most time on. What I find is that there's two groups of people, there's the people who are really excited about that 20-year look at where this community is going, and there's people who need to get to the actual information, when, when are we going to talk about what we're going to do? And the people who want to talk about what we're going to do, get real anxious, you know, shift in their seat for the first couple of months of this process, because we can't tell you what to do until we know where we're going, right? You don't get the car and start it up and just drive around the parking lot until somebody decides what we're going to have lunch, right? You say, where are we going to go? Then we go out, get in the car, and head that way, right? So, unified, clear vision statement, a picture of the ideal Dunkinville 20 years from right now, what does this place look like? The entire road flows half again this way, so what we're going to do is build it based on public engagement, build it based on what the steering committee knows, then we're going to bring it to council and ask you, are we close, are we headed in the right direction? And when you give us the thumbs up, we're going to come back out to the world with what the vision statement is, who is playing. And then flowing from the vision are things like planning principles, planning principles, what I tell people is, at the end of this planning process, there'll be a list of to-do items, I promise you, we'll, we'll have some action items in there, but what you're going to see is that the day you adopt your, your plan, wander in off the street with a big idea. We can't write down everything that's going to happen in Dunkinville in the next 20 years, that's a huge waste of time. Somebody's going to wander in off the street with a big idea, city manager, economic developer, a, a resident, I think we should do this, we need another staff person for that. And what you're going to ask yourself is, how does it get us toward our vision, and how does it align with our planning principles? Planning principles are things like quality of life, improve our quality of life in the community, how, how does it improve neighbor engagement, how does it improve, uh, strong infrastructure, there's big chunky items that we're going to, we're going to work toward as a community. And then this implementation strategy, so, what I tell folks is, we call it five years, if we really call it five years is, when we create a comprehensive plan, we call it 20-year plan. In 20 years, your vision shouldn't move around very much, right? In 20 years, your vision, you should still be getting, you might be getting closer to your vision, but you're not there. Hopefully, in 20 years, your core values don't shake around a whole lot, your core values, as an adult, you probably held the same core values for the last 10 or 15 or 20 years or so, right? Maybe longer. You grew up in a good house, right? You have the core values that are in your body, and you're living, they don't shake around all the time. But if you try four cats, much beyond five years, a real specific action, you're, you're going to, you're going to find that it's, it's not as applicable to further out, right? There's a reason why we created five-year capital, and not 15-year capital. We don't know what construction costs are going to be 15 years ago, we don't know how the community's going to build out, or how the community's going to, going to shape itself, we're going to try, we're going to try and wrangle it, but five years, that's a nice window, or in the next five years, first we're going to do this, then we're going to do that, then we're going to do that, then we're going to do that, then we're going to reorganize, and say, vision still good, yep, planning principles still good, yep, what got checked off, a bunch of stuff, what's left, is it still valid? Oh, yeah, let's keep it in the plan, if it's not, let's dump it and find some new work to do. We talk about catalytic opportunities, we're talking about this today with respect to some of the RFPs you all were talking about. Catalytic opportunities are those things that create other things that we want to see, right? So, those are the first things we want to do, we want to do catalytic projects that are going to start revitalization in a neighborhood, that are going to transform the basic downtown with one or two big anchor projects, right? The plan's going to identify potentially external funding sources, one of the things we love are O P M, other people's money, right? Federal government, state government, you kicked it in, you might as well get it back, correct? So, we're going to identify potential funding sources, and then we're going to designate project lead for each one of those back end. If it's assigned to more than one person, it's assigned to nobody, right? So, we're going to have a project lead, we're going to have a time orientation and a relative cost for each of the projects to shoot on. Go ahead. So, we tentatively set just a staff kickoff with the, with the staff leadership team in August, you're going to have, if you don't already have some names on a roster for a steering committee, it's done, done, we're going to do it, we can probably do a steering committee kickoff in August as well, or we can wait until after everybody shakes out from their summer vacation, and puts their kit back on the bus, and then we can come meet in September, that's up to you all, we can do it as fast or slow as you like. The committee work, it's going to take about eight months for the, for the committee to do their, their work and the public engagement, so my view of 2025 will be sitting here with a draft, I can't remember who else shared, Doug and I talked about this. It's, it's not anticlimactic, but I don't believe in the big reveal, I don't believe in the ta-da moment at the end where we huddle up and make these plans and release them. We want to be releasing these in stages, long-term, make sure we're getting it right. So, when we're done with the data work, we're going to communicate that to the public, so that the public knows this is, this is the, the, the reason they're making this decision. When we finish with the vision and values, we're going to release that to the public so that they know, and, and that we continue to get that by along the way. So, what this draft is going to look like is that work all stitched together in one unified, uh, plan, and we'd be able to adopt it as early as July. In parallel to this, and right in here in the September, the May timeframe, is an economic development strategy that talks about a lot of the things you all have been thinking about. Once the community has a vision, once we're settled on the vision for, then we know we've got market data, it tells us what we're capable of right now, we've got the vision, it tells us where we want to be, and what's in the middle is, what are those economic development strategies that are going to take us there faster? So, it's, we're going to get that work in parallel to the comprehensive plan so that it can be adopted by all of us, and then everybody would be working from the same wood, everybody would be working from the same sheet music. I still encourage the communication, and actually, in our, in our organizational, we talked about meetings like this, this needs to happen more often, but at least you'll be getting together to talk about the successes that you've had by following the sheet music that you put in front of you, right? So, that's, that's our story, and I have any other questions, or talk more about the process, or you can go.
Mayor. So, Matt touched on plans sitting on the shelves, and Matt, maybe you can just talk about C I C a little bit, because, uh, council, I know, when I interviewed you, one of the things that I told you was one of my best ideas is the plan sitting on the shelf, and I have to attest to that, so I am so looking forward to the point where you adopt the vision, because then we can take those action items and we can create an implementation community, so we really go out and start knocking those off, and really give us a way to move the 20, 30, but maybe you can share our past experiences.
Sure. So, after you get out of college, we don't call it play tourism anymore, so what I do is steal everything from Doug, and, uh, when, when Doug and, Doug and I were working a couple of community departments, and what he, what he had identified in a, in a prior community work, it was just that, if you leave it to the council, you've got day jobs, and night jobs, and other work to do as a city council, besides just pumping a cop block, it would be great if that's on the table. I would run through the city council all day, and twice on Sunday, all I had to do was answer my cop block, that's a lot of fun. I got, I have fun weird ways, but, um, the staff, the staff has to run the community, right? They have jobs to do, they have day-to-day tasks, what I just talked about, when they pick up the phone and the day is, is already all over with. So, what this, uh, what shows up typically in our comprehensive plan is, as part of that implementation framework, we ask you to appoint a comprehensive plan implementation committee, and that implementation committee needs monthly, just like the steering committee, and it'll monthly be a few familiar faces from the steering committee to, when we say we're going to do something, and we're done. So, if you have this accountability function built in, the residents show up, or the committee members show up at budget time to the city manager office and say, hey, it's year one, and you said that we're going to do blah, 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 are we off and running on that? What's the status? And that keeps council kind of in a, in a good, a good place, hold the staff accountable, or hold one another accountable.
Do you have any questions? I did have one question, so we previously did an engagement with the R B, I thought it was to do, what I'm reading is, the second part of scope work, what's the difference between the last work we did, we're talking about building here, because I see a lot of that.
Well, so the last work we did was an organizational setup, and what the, what the. And what the, what the, uh, DCECD, the DCEC charged us with was evaluating existing infrastructure, the existing economic development infrastructure, and tell us how it's working. And what we were able to do in that process was make recommendations about how you organize your team and organize your resources, right? Those weren't pointed at any particular strategy. They weren't pointed at newer market segment. They weren't pointed at much externally at all. What they were pointed at was, in our own house, are we doing what we need to be doing to be business friendly? This, uh, economic development strategy is going to say, these are the top five, I made up to that number, you guys are gonna help us decide what that number is. These are the top five market segments we need to go after. These are the, this is the way we need to tailor our incentives, or tailor our business improvement, uh, and retention efforts to do it. Here's who's responsible for that, here's how much funding we need to investigate it. So the, the, the first part of work we did was very internally focused. How's the organization handling economic development? The, this next work is outwardly focused. Now that we've souped up our organization, where are they gonna go get it? Does that make sense?
Do you have some more questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. He said, "Don't worry about the strategy."
So comprehensive plan, any of the economic development strategy? Yes. There's two elements to the script.
And he says, "Comprehensive plan," so.
Yes, it's built into that same script, I'm sorry. And the agreement that's in the fact, it includes the economic.
So, and it's just, it's now happened. Anyway, I was gonna take on all of this, just a question for you to put out there as being special. It is, this is a comprehensive plan, this is an update, right? Without creating a brand new comprehensive plan, is that what I'm saying?
Right.
Right. So it's an update. So the work here is this, is a lot of community.
So the sense, the, how we handle an update versus a complete rewrite is, we spend a good piece of that inventory analysis time evaluating the existing comprehensive plan. And we go out to the public and ask the public some questions to say, "Is this direction that was outlined in the prior comprehensive plan still the direction that the community is hoping to go?" And if the answer is yes, or yes, but, right, then we craft some updated strategies with yes. If the answer is, "I don't even know where this document came from, and it doesn't reflect what I've been talking about at all." And that's in large part what the community and the council said, then we create a whole revision.
Uh, that's better. Questions? At the end of this process, we decide, what happens to previous comprehensive plan body of this process? I don't think there's a difference, right? And again, I'm not. So, so what do I have to do with that? And so what's there is so we can make sure that we don't set ourselves up for another ten years or something. We have the same conversation. But again, that's just a point, what's in place?
That makes a great question, and I think it hits exactly what the government is talking about. If I went door to door at city hall today and said, "Who owns the comprehensive plan in twenty seventeen? Who owns this task, that task, that task, that task, and that task? Who owns the vision, who cultivates it, crafts it? Where is it posted? What does the community think about it?" And if the answers all come back to, "Yeah, that's me, and yes, we did all of those things," then again, we're just kinda back at creating a new to-do list and moving on. But I sense, and you were talking with someone earlier this month about, uh, about updating a plan similar to this, and they said, "We're not even the same community," right? Uh, and in, in a lot of ways, uh, city hall, at least, can be reflective of that, right? New city manager, new pu- public works director, new planning director, new economic development director. How many of you all have been on city council for seventeen? One, one, one member of city council was even on the council in the last comprehensive plan document. So the likelihood of us landing exactly back where that two thousand seventeen plan was, is not, is not, is not substantial. But it's not impossible. It's not impossible.
Mayor, if you speak to the minds that have planned the previous two seventeen, what I heard was that it was a ball play, and didn't really affect the Duncanville, it was just a great idea that, uh, they thought that would work there in the city of Duncanville, but trying to find out, is that the same plan that brought that differently?
That was the downtown Duncanville business plan, which was a ball play in the city of, uh, Tottenham, I believe. And not much was changed in it, except they thought like, uh, put Duncanville in. So the reality is still a work, but definitely the architectural description in that document, the work that we worked on made it become a thing. So that's, that was the approach.
The recommendation does say, uh, update the comprehensive plan twenty seventeen, but I agree that if we review twenty seventeen without done by the end of the season, if it doesn't work, then you can turn it around. And we go and update that information to make it more applicable to the yard now.
Is this the right line? So, I do want to be clear, I do, I do support this action. But again, it's just, uh, like I said, the council might be good to continue it. Because we have the same conversations, this or anything, uh, they will always, you know, experience that change. Because we're gonna look at some of the plans historic, or some of the plans, uh, late two thousand, late nineteen ninety-two, two thousands, two thousand times, about ten, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and down. And I'm, I'm also prepared about this, is that, uh, there, there are some constants, right? And we compare all these plans, but, uh, if you're willing to bet that we go to the community, we ask, and start talking about vision, there's gonna be a lot of language that's a second, there are some constants. So at any point, if we look at some of those constants that have been there for the last decade or so, uh, because it's, it's up there. We have to, actually, we have to. There's a, the tool that we use, it's called a plan, comprehensive plan. And what does it be? We kick it out, and it can be difficult, and we've experienced a lot of people that do, but we kick it out to those who are most familiar with the city and most familiar with the plan. And we ask them, "Review these elements of the brighter comprehensive plan and tell us. Is this done? Did we get this thing done? If we did, great. If we didn't, is it still relevant? If it's still relevant, why didn't it get done? What happened? If it's not so relevant, don't worry yourself with it." Uh, and so that's how we make sure that we don't end up having to do a broad sweep that you're, that you're getting at. There's a couple of, we should just stick to the comprehensive plan, there's a couple of plans out there. As part of the inventory analysis, we do a planning foundation report, which basically is, is here are all the plans that affect this community, including those that were adopted by the community, any regional plans that are in play, any statewide plans that are in play, all of those things that are in there. Because we don't wanna do work twice, and we don't wanna throw the baby out like that, like, like, or say that. Like, if there's loose stuff in the prior plan, particularly the teams, and I love the way you do it, there's a constant over time. And let's go back and test those things out first with the public consent. Is this still where you are? And changes are, right? Is, the difference is, and it's interesting, the timeframe we're talking about, um, COVID changed a lot of things in a lot of different ways. The economy is different, the function is different, um, there's certain changes out there that needed the strategies for the same tactics to be used. Like, you just come at it a different way, and try to be done. Otherwise, it'll be done, you know, nothing's wrong. Uh, and, oh, the, the last thing is, yes, in ten years, you need to be back there doing this again. You need to. Every ten years, you need to do a wholesale pro-over plan. Every five years, you need to come back and do minor updates and tweaks and check it out.
Um, so if we're going to make a decision on two ninety-nine, we have to put up a contract. When it was city representation, I walked away with the understanding that the RFP had everything in town. City, if you're meeting, and under section A, the company shall be authorized and gave service of any gates assistance, uh, system, person, corporation, that the social may be prompted to aid for assistance in the form of a service. Whether it's a need to be required, additional help outside of the RFP, that would be an additional fee. That's not included in the contract.
The second part, I can answer unaccreditedly, no. There will be, we will be able to change in fee unless there's a change in script, um, at your request. You come to me and say, "We also want these." Uh, as presently constituted, we can do every single thing. If you have one partner, that's our social media partner, I talked about it, and it does the sales on half, in case the community wants that. Uh, but, again, if something turns up in the, in the woods that we hadn't bought up, or you hadn't communicated with us, it makes sense to us to be able to say, "Well, let's us not make this up. Let's go get a sub that really knows this inside and out." But that won't adjust your fee unless you ask us to do that.
Do you have a question?
Because one more. We have a budget of eighty-eight. And so where do you put this, uh, full one-five, two-five, three-five, four-five, hundred?
So again.
Or, and this is the type of stuff where I really feel like, uh, surprise I got this partnership, and I can't, and we see, and there is, and five, four, with any, 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 I don't know. Do you want to do the next?
Uh, yes, we need motion.
Wait. One, we've advised, and we see anything for this. I would encourage from the main finger, this is our presentation map, the justice, and they're doing, the, the, this is, and this is the board, and the presentation we made, and I'm happy to have been back there, I think this is a much more successful presentation.